Doug Brekstraw is going to lead us in a word of prayer to honor him.
That's great. Heavenly Father, we call upon you today because we need you. And Father, I thank you for this time that we have to be together today. And I pray, God, that you would guard our hearts and minds. Father, that discussion will be made here today that is relevant to this issue. Father, I pray for wisdom from on high. We thank you for these men. Thank you for what they do in our county, God, and we know how poor that they are. So, Lord, I pray for your wisdom, for your insight, for your spiritual direction in this meeting time today. We pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, sir. You ready to move it?
I'm ready.
You keeping it down?
Are you going to start back first? Yeah.
Do I have any other questions?
Glad to know how you were just breaking up, saying this is what we're discussing.
All right. We're here to discuss the county either opting in or opting out of the state legislature's plan for medical marijuana. We have till next week to make that decision, but we're here today to hear from the general public. We're going to give you three minutes to address it positively or negatively. We ask that everybody try to keep it brief, but we'll hear from anybody that wants to speak in either direction. We've got the list. We've got fifteen here. We'll just start out. We'll go in order. I've got them on the list. Right one hand of that chair. First one on the list today would be Mr. Bill Thurman. Welcome to the podium, sir.
Thank you, sir. I slide this over a little bit. I probably don't want to stick it because I don't like these dastards to deep. I never get by with all these pulleys here. But I want to thank the Supervisors of Union County for hosting this event so that we, the people, can weigh in on our convictions concerning medical marijuana in general and pot shops in particular in our county. First, I'd like to say that I, for one, know your job can be tough. When you have to take limited funds and match those funds to the minute has to be accomplished, that's bound to be hard. A hats off to you. Concerning marijuana, I believe that I have a perspective that others may not have. I am in favor of true medical marijuana, but I'm strongly opposed to recreational marijuana. It's come home to me, you see. I have seen what it can do. I saw my brother get into marijuana back in the 1970s. He had prior to that time been very fastidious, very careful of his appearance, and very precarious. But I saw him change. He became sloppy. Sloppy. Didn't seem to care for anything much anymore or anybody. He wasn't pleasant to be around either. He began to drink alcohol quite heavily, got into car droves, got sclerosis of the liver, and he was nine years older than I am. He finally died at the ripe old age of forty-eight. I miss him very much for this very death. In spite of that, I'm in favor, as I said, of true medical marijuana. Is that what we're faced with here? True medical marijuana? And what about pot shops and growing facilities? According to the Gazette, the Supervisors of Union County still have not decided what to do concerning pot shops. Despite the fact that many of our neighboring counties and municipalities have already opted out of pot shops, our county is in danger of being a pot haven for our neighbors to come here for weed. Why are the people of our county so opposed to pot shops for dispensing this product? Ladies and gentlemen, the devil is in the details. Yes, the people of our state did vote for medical marijuana, but when the legislators of our state crafted this bill, they did all they could to obfuscate and hide those details from the people of our state. The bill they passed is much closer to a recreational marijuana bill than a medical marijuana bill. We're on the precipice of joining the people of San Francisco and Colorado in that respect. Most people I know, including myself, are in favor of medications that come from marijuana plant or any other substance that can be of benefit to those that are sick or dying, if it is through medication. That was a plan offered by the state. There was a plan offered on the state senate floor to have marijuana pills, liquids, CBD oil, topical applications, and nebulizers, and get this, dispensed by pharmacists. But that plan was shouted down on a heartbeat while the folks from Madam and I keep focus on mine. There are people who will make big money out of these pot shops and also growing. So, this where joints, the smoke, and candy so attracted the children to dispense not by pharmacists, but by what is basically a pot sales person. If pharmacists were used, they wouldn't make that much. The people dispensing the product under this bill get this. They're part of only eight hours of training, one working. That's all. That's it. You know, that's about the length of time it takes to train a sales clerk in an department store with me getting that in a pot shop instead of a trained medical professional who has years of medical training. That's what the people say. Don't let anyone tell you pharmacists can't dispense it. They're doing so in several states today, including the liberal states of New York, Quebec. A lot has been made of the fact that they can only get a quart of an ounce. Have you ever weighed tobacco? It takes a lot of tobacco and weed to get that amount of money, amount of tobacco or weed. I understand that marijuana, they have seven joints a day and stay high perpetually. You know, heroin was developed in Germany in the 1890s. The Bayer Ashpen people began marketing those at the shelf in the US in the year 1900. If the winning opinion was that heroin was a miracle drug, all people felt something in their life from then. It took a while to realize how addictive and dangerous heroin was and it became illegal to sell it into the public around 1916. Marijuana is a gateway drug to other drugs. I know this from watching my late brother's decent death.
We have thirty seconds.
Okay, let me just, I'm just winding it up. I promise. What has been done concerning marijuana will shape this community and now for the better. I know you folks are a lot of pressure. I know that. You may have been off at camp, laying cash, supporting the so-called movements and shakers. I will let all the signs and eyes of any, and they'll tell you if you've forgotten your time. But there comes a time to consider the future of your children and grandchildren ahead of the desire of some few to make money. If you decide to opt out instead of lying and seeking, I can give thanks again, and God bless you firsthand. If not, shame on you. Thank you.
Thank you. The next time, I'm going to give somebody thirty seconds notice. I've got thirty seconds left. Next, we've got Mr. Ethan Hackman.
Thank you. Thank you for hosting us. Union County residents are the salt of the earth. There is a solid foundation of morality and neighborliness. Their friendliness and hospitality is renowned and remarkable enough to lure out of staters, including Yankees like my wife and me, into their communities. But when the salt of the earth loses its saltiness, we all know what happens. It gets cast aside and trampled on their foot and buried. Union County residents are on the brink of having their innate sense of compassion turned and weaponized against them, as has happened in so many American locales in this postmodern era. They are in danger of being trampled, as it were, by their very desire to help others and to limit the suffering of others. While it is logical to not want our friends and neighbors to suffer, to want to ease their pain and travails, the legalization of addictive and destructive drugs will, in the long run, only harm these victims as well as the greater community. The powers that be, politicians and lobbyists, the future dealers of legalized drugs, both natural and synthetic, and the future heads of these legalized drug cartels, know these very facts, and they know that by appealing to the emotions of compassion and care enharred by so many Mississippians, they can line their pockets for perpetuity by having bills such as the recent ones passed. I ask this board to look beyond such appeals to emotion and take a wider view of the issue. The matter before us, if we view it through an undistorted lens, is one of either seeding our way of life toward values creep or of preserving a traditional ethos. Values creep, otherwise called the slippery slope or the moving of the overton window, sees people unwittingly consent to policies that appear on the surface to be constructive but that are actually detrimental to the individual and the community when examined more closely. The norms we take for granted slowly become altered with new ideas being foisted and pushed upon the public as good. And before one knows it, we've created a landscape of chaos, detritus, and confusion where our old values are merely things we long for, knowing they're gone forever. We can already see values creep and the slippery slope in countless American places, including the Magnolia State, where citizens begin by saying yes to legalize medical marijuana, they unwittingly open the overton window to legalize recreational marijuana. In other states, the window hasn't stopped at legalized recreational marijuana. More powerful and destructive drugs are now amazingly being opened up to legalization. For example, the Colorado House of Representatives a week and a half ago approved a bill that would eventually lead to legalized MDMA prescriptions. MDMA, also known as ecstasy, is a drug everyone in this room has warned their kids to stay away from. Now ecstasy is being canonized by elected leaders in an American state of six million people. When government sanctions the mass stuification of its people, one knows we live in a dysfunctional society. I ask you to opt out, to inspire the New Albany aldermen to do the same, and to be the wall that stops the slippery slope of values creep from landsliding down onto the people of this county, trampling them and burying them.
My dear. My dear. I hope that the folks, this lady around here, y'all come on in. One just lined up back there that can't hear, that might want to see what it'd be and see if you can get them in here somehow. Boy, there's back there. That off, somebody hiding those offices back there, he's like, can't hear. All right. Next, we've got Mr. Will Carpenter.
I don't have no written speech today. I know this. I know I was lost one day and I've been fighting for Jesus Christ, and I know that drugs and alcohol get in the wrong hands and never no good comes out of it. And I am for the medical marijuana as a pill or liquid to help somebody in their pain with cancer or what have you, but for the recreational and for the partying, it don't bring nothing but tragedy and death. And I've witnessed it in my life, and I know some has here. Even the alcohol that's been brought into this town, I will say this, it has brought some tragedies on in this town. And that's the reason I'm against it. I'm for Jesus and I'm against the devil. I stand for the Lord today. I am a minister of God, and I have to speak what my Bible reads. And I know that the wages of sins, death, and the guilt of God is eternal life. That's all.
Thank you, Will. Next, we have Ms. Kathy Chubb.
Thank y'all for having me here today. I have a lot to say, and I know I don't have long to say it, so I'll try to make it real short. As everybody here knows, Jesus Christ sent me Jackson to do my job, and I have had a lot of ups and downs, ins and outs, but this marijuana deal is one of the worst. They brought this bill to the floor. I voted against it. Some of the others did, but not enough of them. We have too many rhinos down there. We need more Christian, good, conservative Republicans down there to vote on some of these bills like this marijuana bill. I can tell you that I have watched, and my husband, too, is here somewhere. We've watched a segment in Oklahoma. This is a cash business. If y'all don't understand that, that is federally illegal. It is a cash business. If you go to Oklahoma, they will open doors to a warehouse, and you can look in there. They show it on TV. There are stacks and stacks and stacks of cash on pallets. They can do nothing with it because it's cash. And whatever they do with it, they have to do it cash money. So, the people that live around these areas, some of them are growers, some of them are your pot shops, the people that live around these areas, they give testimonies telling. At night, we're scared to death. We hear gunshots all through the night, right here in our yard, right next door to us. I mean, they have no value of life that they can live. Now, they even say that they can't sell their homes. Nobody wants the home. It's right there beside the growers. It's right there beside the pot shops. And they don't, they can't, they have no value. They have no life. Their homes have lost all value. What have they got left? That's what's going to happen in the state of Mississippi. And I know that some people don't believe that. Give it a year. Give it two years, maybe five years. I don't know. But I promise you, this is the devil in disguise coming to Mississippi. People have worked hard, very hard to... Look at our town. This is a beautiful town, one of the prettiest towns in the state of Mississippi. When you have these pot shops that an eight-hour training person can go in there and sell you pot, you're going to ruin this town, everybody, just like they said. People are going to come from out of town to get the marijuana. I'm totally against it. I hope that when y'all opt out, you'll stay opting out, because I do know that you have ninety days, which you have like until May the third or fourth, and then there's another hundred and fifty days, not another, but from the time you started. There's a hundred and fifty days for Mississippi Department of Health to set their guidelines. Once they set their guidelines, I've been told that a lot of the towns around are planning to opt in. They're opting out right now, but the guidelines are set, they're going to opt in. Those guidelines are going to be about like the guidelines that are in that 177-page bill. So, be very careful about opting in. Snoop Dogg, the rapper, I've got all kinds of information here. He has invested $25 million into marijuana. Here's his rap sheet. I'm talking from back in the 90s. Here's his rap sheet that tells all of the things that he's been arrested for, starting right here and then going on this page. All of the things that he's been arrested for, most of them have been marijuana and guns with his marijuana. I'm totally for the Second Amendment rights. His guns got him in trouble because of all of his prior convictions of marijuana. So, y'all take a look at this and pray about this. I'm begging. I'm standing up here begging, please do not opt in in another two months, because you're going to ruin Union County. And I'm here fighting for Union County. God sent me Jackson to fight for Union County, Pontot County, Benton County, and now two more counties because our dear leaders down there messed up our districting, which is another subject. But I'm here fighting for the counties that I stand for, and we do not want this. Think of your kids. Think of your grandkids. I don't want my kids on it. I don't want my grandkids smoking this stuff. It's just like my pops' brother. He died at forty-eight years old. It all started with marijuana. It is a gateway drug, a total gateway drug. And as I said, it's a cash business. The eight hours training, the hundred and fifty days. I'm trying to go over my notes here to make sure I don't miss anything.
You're out of time.
When I have...
You're out of time. I give you thirty seconds.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Amendment number five came to the floor. That was a true medical marijuana bill. It was by Senator Hill. You would go to the doctor, you would get your card, you would get, you'd go to a specialty pharmacy, you would get either a pill, you would get liquid, you'd get CBD oil or nebulizer. Those are the four things that are truly medical. Her bill got shot down instantly, or it was her amendment, and then she dropped it as a bill and they killed it again, because the money didn't lie there with her amendment. There was no money there for everybody, out of state especially. And I voted for that amendment because it was truly medical, and I voted against the bill that has 477 pages of evil in it. Thank you.
All right. Next, we have Lori Sherrill.
Thank you. I'm very grateful that you're allowing this to be discussed. I'm originally from Oregon, born and raised, so I provide a very unique perspective. And I'm going to tell you, everything she said is 100% true. My brother-in-law is an FBI agent that works in Colorado, and you have major, major issues because, like you said, the money is not FDIC insured, therefore it's housed, therefore criminals come in from all different states. I've seen it in my home state. They're coming from Georgia, and they are killing and robbing the farmers. And then on top of it, your value of your home depreciates radically because you've got these hot houses, you've got marijuana growing. It's very stinky. It creates a wealth of transients coming into your city, and it doesn't matter if you say, oh, we're going to put it over here in this part of town, or, oh, it's only for the county. I promise you, Bankhead will be not what it is. You will not have the revenue that you currently have. I have seen children and youth in my home state, and this is where it started. It started with medical marijuana. And we all know what Oregon is now. I will never live in my home state. And when I was a child, that was an amazing state, like Mississippi, like New Albany. Don't do this to your children, to your grandchildren. I know, you all know, we all know what's right. We all follow the Bible. And in the Bible, Jesus was up there cleaning and getting rid of all the money out of the temple. And that's what this is, brothers and sisters. This is evil, and it is money in your temple, and your temple is your lair. Your temple is this town, and you've got to protect it. Because if you don't, I tell you, it will look like Oregon in ten, twenty, thirty years, and you will not have a sanctuary. You will not have a culture that is protected. Your children will follow way. They will not follow God. They will not follow their Savior. This is the beginning. It is from the devil himself, and I can speak passionately about this because I came from it. And it breaks my heart to think that you would even ever consider it. Please, I am begging you, opt out permanently. Don't ever be tempted, because it's on your shoulders, brothers. It's your shoulders, and I don't want to see what happens. You have to say to God someday, because that's on you. And I love y'all very much. I love this land, and I know how important to say no is.
Cheryl, is this you on there?
Yes, sir. Well, I told y'all when I asked you to opt out, it was going to have a few, and I was going to do my best to fill the room, but that's what I done. I called many of these people, asked them to come and to talk to you, and asked you to opt out. And I think it's the wolf in sheep's clothes. And you hear it in front of the people. These people that wear these badges, they go around every night to broken homes, and it's all because of drugs and alcohol. So, I don't have much more to say than what these people have to say of them. I hope you opt out and stay opt in.
Next, I have Kenny Digby.
Thank you for having this public here. What's brought us here was the total confusion from beginning to end on Initiative 65 and 65A. And many legislators use that confusion to justify the medical marijuana bill. The best part of that bill is an opt-out option that many of us fought long and hard to keep in the bill. What we're talking about today is not whether or not there'll be medical marijuana in Mississippi. That ain't the issue. The issue is, do you want more marijuana or less marijuana in Union County? That's the issue. Ask the medical community, will we be better off with more marijuana or less marijuana? Ask law enforcement, does it make their job harder or easier? I say it again, the issue, I'm not nailing, the issue ain't no marijuana. There're going to be some marijuana. Do you want more or do you want less? If there's a waste dump with hazardous material, do you want it in your neighborhood or a hundred miles away? If there is a federal prison with high-risk, high-security prisoners, do you want that prison in your community or a hundred miles away? The issue is access and availability. That's the issue. Now, I understand the folks talking about being sensitive and compassionate about terminally ill patients. My mama died of pancreatic cancer in thirteen. My daddy died of prostate cancer in the bone marrow in fifteen. I was the primary caregiver for both of them. But if my mama and daddy were here today, they'd tell you they are more concerned about the future and the welfare of their children and grandchildren than how much pain is involved in graduating to heaven.
Amen.
Impaired people are dangerous. I don't care why they are impaired. Impaired workers, if they even show up, are dangerous in the workplace. Impaired drivers on the waterway Saturday afternoon are dangerous. Impaired drivers on the highway will put your wife and children in danger. I was a widower for seven years because of an impaired driver. You've got a chance to send a message to your constituents, you want less marijuana and not more. You've got a chance to send a message to northeast Mississippi. You've got a chance to send a message to Jackson. This ain't the Mississippi we grew up in. There will be future battles in the legislature. Your decision will make those future battles easier or harder. I beg you, take the long look. Look at the big picture for the sake of our children and grandchildren. Opt out for the greater good.
Scott Maxey.
I'm going to defer mine to the last.
Okay, and I'm last.
That's it. He was last.
We're not drawing straws here.
I'll turn you.
I can split that. No problem.
It's your spot.
I don't really have a speech made up, but I've been here in Union County, New York City for 55 years, and I don't understand why we're at this point, why we're having to leave you all to decide whether you're going to opt in or opt out. Y'all are elected officials, and here's my question. Where do you stand on it? I just got that question. Where do each one of y'all stand on opting in or opting out? Y'all know where we stand? Where do y'all...
I'm out. I'm out.
I'm out. Where are you standing at?
I'm for the medical marijuana, but I'm not...
You're for medical marijuana? Okay. In what form?
But I'm not... I'm not for the recreational.
In what form?
In what form?
Yeah. Of a joint or the...
Oh, no, in a pill or liquid form. If it's medical marijuana, just...
Through a pharmacy, what is it? Through a pharmacy or through a pot, actually, kind of. Okay.
And that's not an option.
Right?
I'm 100% on board with medical marijuana.
All I can say is, like Brother said there, it's the devil in sheep's clothing, and if you can't see that, we've probably got the wrong people elected. I just, I hate to say it. The rest of that station is, you need to always, if you've got an option, and you're not forced to, to always keep the option open, in my opinion. Thank you.
Mark Pough.
I'm out.
Thanks, guys. Mary Tate, final.
Well, I don't have a written speech, but my question is, I find that a company is my back for here, the market's all, and how would a company come in and already be creating a plant of cultivation? I don't understand. If they didn't know we were going to opt in or opt out, why would they go in and put that money in for that building?
I got a statement there. For full disclosure, as far as I know, nobody at this table knows of any company from anywhere investing any money into Union County currently to grow marijuana.
Have you...
None do you hear.
...ever met your ears out of the...
This is not a...
It's solid. It's common knowledge in the layman community. And I have heard that money has even passed out, and I hope and I pray that none of our elected officials, none of that money has gone to any of you or to any elected officials. I lived in this town. I did three years. I've always been sorry for anything, the county has done, the city has done, but this is one thing that I am very opposed to. I don't approve of underhanded money going to different people in order to get their pay up here for cultivation. They have been surveyors, even the man in this town, they were surveying property yesterday. And I just hope and pray that none of our elected officials are involved in any of
Randy Robbins. Randy Robbins.
As with others, I don't have a written speech. You didn't know I was gonna get to speak today. I spent the last five, six years of my career in racial protest for a global website. And in all the areas, we had over six hundred employees. In all the areas where marijuana became legal, let me tell you what we saw. We saw, we had million dollar cranes, eight, nine, ten million dollar cranes running around the yards. We had to provide operators for them. We had load barges, we had tugboats, we had pilot boats. All these people that started using medical marijuana, which never, it doesn't stay medical marijuana very often at all. Before everybody gets a card, it's easy to get a card. And for a sleeping death patient, you name it, you can get a card. And then you're on medical marijuana. What I saw from these employees and ones that started using it was productivity fell to the bottom. Attendance fell to the bottom. You couldn't get anybody to come to work anymore. Every time we had an accident, which they doubled and tripled, driving million dollar cranes that weighed three, four hundred thousand pounds. We had to send, because of insurance, we had to send them to be drug tested. Guess what? Positive. What does that do? What does that do? Well, every week I see where we're having a job fight. Somewhere in Tupelo, Pontotown, you name it. Because Kenny said it don't work now. When you start this, what it does to people, as y'all have seen your whole lives, just like I have, you become lost and undone. Your home becomes undone. You stop taking care of your children. You stop taking care of your job. You stop caring about everything. Your parents, your hygiene, everything in your life changes, changes. Medical marijuana won't stay medical marijuana past the first day. It will not. And I hope you guys do not let this in this community. Now, is there gonna be less marijuana, as Kenny Digby said a while ago? Yeah, that will be less because it's not legal. There won't be growing houses here. There won't be hot shops here. There's always been marijuana here since I came up. There's always been marijuana here. There'll always be marijuana here. But when you make it that readily available, that easy for drug parties, you get on eight hundred number nine. They're gonna stop taking kids to school. We're gonna stop coming to church. Everything in your life becomes undone. I've seen it. I've seen it. Our profit margins plummet in these areas that we're in. So if you're thinking you're doing this for a tax rate, it will not work. What it does is everyone falling in a sand, it destroys the community. I wish I didn't have to prepare a speech, but I didn't know I was gonna get to speak. But thank y'all for that.
I'm thinking this is Suzanne Robertson.
Great job.
Excellent, okay.
I don't have a speech either, but medically this could have been right, but it was written terribly and my son, he's a nurse at the hospital. He sees people on drugs every day here anyway. We don't need, I mean, we just don't need it. If it had been done through pharmacies, it would have been good. But smoke shops and gas stations is not the way to go. They're not qualified. Like you said, the one day training, no, they're not pharmacists. They're not medical people. And it just does not need to be in our county like that. Thank you.
Ms. Sue Morrison.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak and for having this meeting also. I want to share a few bits and pieces of the actual opt-out order the City of Madison did because I think it pretty much puts us all together in perspective. And it also shows the authority that this board supervisors has. The medical, the City Medical Cannabis Act is, as Kathy said, it's four hundred and it's on a lot of pages. This says four forty-five. We won't cover about that. That's not important. But anyway, it went into effect on February the second of this year. The cult of meaning of cultivation, processing, sale and distribution of cannabis and cannabis products were made legal throughout the state of Mississippi. Whereas, and this is some of their legalese, so if I throw that in, just know it's written by some attorney. And I appreciate that. Whereas, the governing authority, which is here to board supervisors, has the power to make regulations to secure the general health of the municipality. And as a part of the responsibility of the county, reviewed these legislation guidelines from, the legislative guidelines from the FDA and from the Federal Controlled Substance Act. And on a second, third level, had effects, those effects on the state and other municipalities with similar marijuana programs. That's a big responsibility, men and women. That's a big responsibility. Program guidelines are still being established, which you know, they won't be out for months yet. So the thought of opting in, something that you didn't know the rules for, would be fairly dangerous. Or if not, let's just say irresponsible, I think. Anyway, medical marijuana has no proof of effectiveness from the FDA. And that's the gold standard in the medical community. You know, the FDA, the federal regulators, they study, they research. And they tell us what supposedly has beneficial effects and what may not and or what bad effects of drugs might be. So just know that we don't have that assurance that there is anything good about the medical marijuana. Even though some people have anecdotal successes using it. There is one product available that is a cannaboy product called Marinol. And that is prescribable by your physician if you have a problem that requires that. Know that we'll get the identification cards. And even on the identification cards that people will be given, they have to state on there that there are harm, can be harmful effects of this marijuana. So that's admitting that there's some areas that we don't know about there. And I know it's the same thing with Tylenol, but I think it's important to know that.
Third of regs.
Okay, excuse me. Anyway, the rules of regs specifically allow you, the county, to promote health and safety standards and the general welfare of the community. And that's what we've all been discussing here today. And we can, y'all have the regulatory authority. We're zoning where these shops and these distribution centers all can be. And you know, we have that in the law to help you. But it still comes down to your personal responsibility, your constituents, and knowing what your constituents' feelings are and not be driven totally by your own personal emotions, but also the emotions of all your constituents. That's very important. There's more to be said about it. And I just want to say I thank Mary Hawkins-Buttwood, the mayor of Madison, for providing this. I'd be happy to provide a copy to y'all if you're interested.
Thank you, Ms. Sue.
What's my home? I'm a family nurse practitioner. I've been in practice since nineteen seventy-nine. I ran a rural health clinic for thirty years. I opened the medical clinic at Toyota, stayed there for four years. I've been in community practice and I currently take care of hospice patients who definitely are in need of management of pain and anxieties. And I think we have pretty good methods in doing that. Not the best for everybody, but we do have ways to address the needs of these people in need now. And these are hospice patients, people that are expected to live less than six years. So I'm not ignorant about needs for pain management or anxiety at all. But I think this is a poor way to go about it and it puts our communities at risk.
Mr. Danny Barnes.
Yes, sir. I don't have nothing written down or printed off or anything like that. But I will tell you what I experienced as a constable. A deputy sheriff, policeman two times, and a county supervisor. I experienced lies torn up by such as this. Now, I talked to inmates in this old jail over here. And they didn't mind telling me, I love smoking that marijuana. But it gives me a little buzz. But when I turn up a beer with it, that gives me a bigger buzz. And then when that didn't do it, I went on to stronger drugs. So marijuana is a gateway drug. We don't make it in this county where you need it for medicinal or for anything. And like they were saying, these other states started out medicinal. Boom, here goes recreation and it's everywhere. Now, I've worked with people in these furniture fags. And during break, during lunch, they run out there to the cars, light one up. They come back. Sometimes they'd blow furniture out and sometimes they wouldn't. Sometimes they'd load furniture like that and sometimes they wouldn't. But I did notice that there was a brain problem going on, mental health issue. Eventually it burned their brain. Now, Lord ladies on my heart. My son come home from Atlanta. He got hold of something. I don't know what it was. And he didn't tell you, and during the day, I called everybody I knew to get him some help. Well, he got help now, but he's disabled. And he on regular drugs, you know, prescription drugs and all that, which makes him better. He can walk. And he can feed himself as far as preparing anything, putting on his shirt, taking a shower, things like that. He's not, you know, he's not there. He ain't happy. We getting him in rain out for motor skills again. Maybe the Lord and that will help him. We got a drug problem in the United States. We don't need it in Mississippi. I promise you, we do not need it in Mississippi. Even if it's something disguised over medical. Prescription drugs are the most abused drugs in the United States. They are. So that tells you that prescription marijuana is gonna be one of the most abused. Schedule one drug too, federal law. You buy it here, you go in another state that don't sell it. Then you've committed a federal crime. Opt out.
That's everybody I had on this list. Is there anybody else?
Yeah, I didn't sign up, but I want to say so.
Please, sir.
Probably, I know South of Dallas knows personally. I made the first marijuana raid, mate. Caught the first marijuana. Using form and also fraud. And I watched people, gunk people, starting from seventy-two. And the majority of them, and there's always exceptions, but the majority of them, their life and note turned out as eighty-two. And then I came back and the sheriff again in the eighties. And these same people who started with marijuana were into what was then in the eighties, crack and cocaine. And I just want to say that it's an obfuscation. The FDA of marijuana is a Schedule one drug. Countless sativa L is a scientific name for marijuana. Countless sativa L is a Schedule one drug. A Schedule one drug includes cocaine and a number of the mind altering drugs. So don't tell me marijuana in any form, I'm against it as medical marijuana. If it was any good, it would be in our drugstores years ago and be prescribed. But it's not. And this is all about money. Everything about this is private, private growers, private shop, all for money. That's obfuscation.
I'm here, eighteen, county Baptist Association Mission Director. And I want to apologize to you folks. We've got five Southern Baptist pastors here. Out of forty churches, we have five. We're not dealing with drug issues. We're dealing with a spiritual issue. That's why our problems are. We can't get churches to come together and work together. I don't know how many Methodist churches there are. I don't know how many Methodist pastors are here. We need our men of God to stand up and be men of God. When we're men of God standing, we're men of God. Medical cannabis, medical research has shown that it is a effective drug if it's used properly. As Brother Digby said a moment ago, and I agree a hundred percent with you. It is here. It's in Mississippi. It's in Union County. We're not going to avoid it coming in. People are gonna get it no matter what. I would hate to see medical dispensaries set up in Union County. I would hate to see that because we have a quiet, quiet town. I like what Brother Digby said, let them drive a hundred miles. Let them drive to Tupelo. Let them drive to Blue Springs. Let them drive to Merle and get it. We need to protect our cells. We need to protect our children. But there are, as one of the other pastors said a moment ago, there are medical benefits. There is medical research that has proven that it is effective. But as any drug, it's gonna be abused. It's gonna be. Sally Ann or Joe, whoever's gonna go down, if they want marijuana in Union County, they're gonna go to the street corner, the creek bank, and they're gonna get marijuana. The ones that legitimately need it are not going to be able to get it. But again, I don't think we need it in our local area. But it's in Mississippi. We're not gonna stop it. Sheriff, you know, it's not gonna, it's not gonna, it's not gonna change the fact that people are gonna go get it and bring it back here still. But we confide as hard as we can to keep it out of our community. So encourage, if your pastor's not here, I'm gonna encourage you. Ask your pastor, why did you not come support us? Why were you not standing with him? Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
This is specifically to law enforcement. Whereas the act also limits law enforcement's ability to ascertain marijuana possessed by a car holder was lawfully obtained and the location from which it was obtained, providing only that the officer may contact a verification system to enter a registry identification number to determine if the card is valid.
Anybody else I'd like to address the board? Forward.
Yes, sir. I'd like to ask them. How many do y'all think is actually using that or would use that? Got a estimate of people, hundred, two hundred, two thousand? How many?
Better than one, Danny.
That would be using that federal medical.
Oh, I don't know.
Do y'all see it as a money maker for the county on the tax or anything?
We don't get any sales tax revenue at all in the county, so we would not. The only way we would see any tax revenue is the production side for the property and personal property taxes. On the production side, as far as the retail sale, we've got nothing to gain by the sale of product.
So y'all can't all tax something.
You referenced Scott's place can hurt her. And I said that I was for, I'm for people that are sick and have cancer and need it for medical reasons. But I'm not for what they're gonna try to do now. I'm for getting a prescription and doing it the right way. That's why I said I'd be for medical marijuana, but not the way they're doing it now. Done the right way with a prescription through your doctor.
Thank you for speaking up. I'm curious to hear if the last two have a new position based on the facts that have been shared. What are your two opinions?
I just gave mine.
No, you're, I'm talking about the last two. I know you said that you're totally for it. But I'm just curious to know if your opinion has changed and if we did hear from you.
I'm not a supervisor. I'm a board attorney.
We don't want to be.
I don't want to be the back end. I don't want to be a front end. You're not worried about my opinion.
It's just something, right?
Yeah. Yeah, he just. I just do whatever they tell me to do.
I'll tell you my, everybody sitting here, I need to address, I've been not, for full disclosure, when we voted for medical marijuana on the ballot, I actually voted against it personally. Since then, I've done a good bit of research into it, and for the last little bit, I've done a good bit more. And I think I've been, since the beginning, we had option to opt out. I've been pretty clear with the board that I was a hundred percent on board with opting out of the retail sale anywhere in Union County, outside of the municipalities. We have no control over what the municipalities do as a county board. You've got Merle, Blue Springs, Sherman, and New Albany that make their own rules, and I don't think it's our place to step in, nor can we. So I've been pretty clear on the front end. I would, I don't support a retail sale anywhere in Union, in the county, but I have no problem whatsoever with the production, research, or growth of the product in Union County, strictly because I think that is a good opportunity for us as a county to collect tax revenue that takes a strain off of our homeowners and property owners.
Coming from Oregon, I've seen what it does to the county, because I come from Josephine County, and that's in southern Oregon, and that's where they grow marijuana heavily, and it completely ruins the county and devalues all the homes, and you have gangs from other states that come in and raid because you cannot, you cannot protect those counties, like those county areas, because like she explained, the money is not FDIC insured, and so money and product is housed in people's property, and so you see a lot of crime. And then that crime then leads into the town. So like Grants Pass where I'm from, that town has a lot of transients. My nephew was almost harmed, and he was just riding his bike. And so, in a, in a, what you would call like big head in a nice, what you would think safe area or side of street, so you think that, oh, this is a good thing, you're bringing in revenue, but like I used in my analogy of the Bible, it's not. We need to keep our property and our homes and our land clean from this, because it will be nothing but heartache now and then in our children's futures.
CJ, let me ask you a question. Would you be comfortable, I'm a farmer, would you be comfortable with me starting a rural operation?
Well, I didn't completely finish. I had my, with some objection as to how close it could be to residential property. If it is a rural area or a commercial area that's already industrialized, that's, to me, that's different than somebody putting a growing facility in a neighborhood. Well, I would go along with the state guidelines of at least fifteen hundred feet, maybe even more.
Would you be okay, would you be okay with your best friend, who's pledged to the law, drug marijuana, running off of regulations out?
I think he'd be okay with it. I've actually had that discussion. I tell you, you know where my property is on 137? I'd be fine with it there.
We have, I mean, we have trash coming into our neighborhood already. We don't, we just don't need trashy whatever.
Has anybody seen a production facility in person that the state, that makes a state face?
I've seen it in other states, yes, I have.
It looks like a metal building. It looks just like a furniture factory.
With a chain link barbed wire fence around it.
That's right.
All right.
That's not true. That is not true. In Colorado, they're growing it at your house.
That's not, that's not where Mississippi is.
That's where it's used to.
That is for guns out there. I think you, well, we live in Colorado, and that's a town.
And then they have laws, and they say like, you have to be so far away, and then you don't have a fence. Well, what they've done then, and then the counties and the cities have to cover up that, they use a big black plastic in the fence, and it looks very trashy. So there's so many things you don't see and think of because you haven't lived in those states, and I'm telling you that this is bad.
But any revenue that you generate from these types, from these growers and distributors, any taxes you're going to have right now, I promise you, you will lose nothing here.
Exactly.
You will spend all your law enforcement, these guys, they don't have a job like they do now.
It ties their hands based on the law.
These factories, the shops are gonna be less productive. It's not gonna be medical marijuana that first down. When it starts getting, everybody cut that card, and I show them, so here's my card, I'm good to go. You're gonna lose if it doesn't. I just think, as I've said in my company, you're gonna lose the property. Anything you see, any provision, you're gonna lose nothing here. And watch the drought first, because I don't think we can't get up there now.
I'd like to say something.
Wait, wait, wait.
I'd like to ask a couple questions. We're talking about crime increasing here, and as I explained a few minutes ago, in Oklahoma, the people that live around these growing facilities that are within fifteen hundred feet, even farther, I have a question. How far, to the law enforcement, how far does a bullet travel? How far can a bullet travel and kill? That's what we're trying to tell you. That's what we're trying to express here. You're gonna bring crime into Union County, and I don't care if you're a half a mile from that growing facility. When cartel comes in here, and they will be here, I promise you, because this brick and mortar building that we have downtown, that we call a dispensary, that is a front, that is a cover up for cartel. The guy that wrote this bill, Senator Blackwell from DeSoto County, I went to him, he was telling everybody, he said, "This will stop the cartel, this will stop the black market." This is, exactly, and that's what I told him. I said, "This is gonna be a cover up for the black market, a cover up for the cartel," because it's cash, money, and they're gonna come in here, and if they can do this in cash, have to do it in cash, do you think they're gonna report all their sales? Do you think you're gonna get sales tax off of anything?
Well, it's.
And even the sales that are reported, that the sales tax comes back to the city, they charge seven percent sales tax. You know how much the city gets off at seven percent? Eighteen cents. That's eighteen percent, I'm sorry, eighteen percent. It is not worth it, and it's not worth it. And, I mean, I'll answer any questions, if anybody has any questions, just. You're saying absolutely the truth. I've seen it in Oregon, in southern Oregon, out in the country, beautiful land, that's exactly what happened. The Mexican cartel, the Russian cartel, they all came in, bought up a lot of land, and there's hot houses, and it's crazy. It's nothing you want to be a part of. And yeah, it might seem okay in the first year or two, but I tell you what, I went back to my home and saw it firsthand after they had made it the law, and I was appalled at the deterioration and the quality of life and land and people, and people. And I just pray that y'all understand this, and you opt out and you stay opted out, because I understand what you're saying, CJ, that if you go way out in the country somewhere where there's no houses around, then we can grow it, be okay with it? That's not gonna. Absolutely not, that's what I see. It doesn't. Cartel is still gonna come in, and that's all about money, and as God says, the love of money is the root of all evil, and I'll shut up.
I'd like to make a motion to opt out of all phases of medical marijuana.
Thank you.
Completely.
You just got reelected.
I'm on second.
I'm second.
I've got one statement.
Come on, Scott, lady cop.
Look, if, if the city board of all, and the county board of supervisors wanna present this to the people and get their opinion, let us vote on it. Y'all, y'all work together and set a guideline, if the city, county, as a whole votes it, then that's, that's a majority. But to stick something under our nose, make us smell it, is not fair. I know, I know the state voted on it, and I don't believe that's right, because it was smoking marijuana, the way it's written out. It's a simple yes or a simple no. And if that is an option, I want y'all to have the guideline laid out, clearly explanatory, and let the people decide instead of it being a layoff. So I keep my.
Bye. Bye. That's true.
Then you had your hand up.
Are y'all doing business, or?
Well, you had your hand up before we started business.
I just wanted to say one last thing. It's not about revenue, and it's not about how pretty a growing facility can be made. It's about preserving the spirit and the culture of this place.
Yes.
I'm, I'm not special, you're all special, I'm not special, but I'm gonna tell you one more time my story. My wife and I were natives of New England. Forty-seven years I've been up there, in New Hampshire and Maine. We fled New England to come here, New Albany, Union County. A calculated decision that people like us are making, that people like Lori and her family are making. We are coming here because of the spirit and the culture of this place and the goodness of the people who live here. We can't bring degeneracy to this place. There are no more new frontiers. This is it. America is ending. This is it. We have to take a stand. Just because the tide is coming in doesn't mean that we have to give in to it. We can push back against it.
So I have a question.
Brother Bush.
How do we, how do we keep it out of Union County? I know you guys are in charge of keeping it out of.
We just gotta stay opted out. That's what, we gotta stay opted out.
But, but are you guys opting out of Union County or just the city?
No, we're in the county.
We're county, we have nothing to do with the city.
For the whole county?
No.
Or Union County.
Not even the county. All of them have to opt out of theirs.
The city ought to put that one without.
We just stopped.
It'll be legal in your city.
We just stopped it in Canada.
Regardless of how much revenue comes in, we, I have no idea. When I heard that it was a cash only, I know people that operate their businesses in cash only, and I feel very confident that most IRS does not see a lot of that money, so I don't think we're gonna make a lot of revenue, but even if we did, my question is, I know alcohol was supposed to bring in tax money for us as well, but right now, we are, we are taking care of six homeless men and trying to feed them, clothe them, and house them, and every one of their cases started with substance abuse and either drugs, alcohol, or both, and no doubt marijuana played a part in that. So I ask you to look at the long term, and regardless of how much money comes in, on the backside of it, there will not be enough to turn around and fix everything that it breaks.
Right. Yes.
And I've been here sixty years in Union County, and I'd hate to see us going any further south than we've already gone. Culture within itself is going to continue to drag man down, as we know, life's not getting better as far as the way things are going. We're not in the good old days, and it's gonna gradually get worse, the Bible says that, but we, we don't need to add fuel to the fire or anything.
Yes.
And make, make the devil's job any easier. Thank you very much.
Will you re-read the motion we've been passed here and here?
The motion was to opt out of all medical marijuana in Union County.
Indefinitely.
No, nothing's indefinite in this, but.
Well, that's why I'm, well, yeah, I'd like to know your opinion. I don't want to be deceived and think that you're opting out.
My vote is to opt out completely.
Complete for. That's what I want.
Thank you. What about you, sir?
Forever. Forever. That ain't no good. I just want to be clear, I want to be clear for everybody so that y'all understand that obviously this board can make commitments that they're going to opt out and they'll never opt back in, but do understand that a future board, I mean, boards change, a future board could opt in, and also obviously, y'all are aware that the public could have a hearing, a vote, rather. There could be a vote either brought by petition by the citizens. I think there's also a mechanism under the law that the board can opt, can start the vote process, but I don't think, based on what these gentlemen have said, that they're gonna do that.
Please don't do that.
So I just want to be clear for everybody that when you ask, "Is it forever?", well, it may be forever for this board, but that could change.
As, as the section thirty of the Act says, that if you ever opt in, it is irrevocable. So once you opt in, you're in forever regardless of anything, so that's dangerous. So you can't, I, it's like dabbling, you know? You tell your kids, "Don't do it," and that's the same for us. You dabble, you can't go back. You've had that experience. You know, if a child tries drugs, they can't ever undo the knowledge that they have. We don't need it. We don't need it here ever.
Is board, are you voting?
We don't vote, I'm sorry. We had voted, we did the vote, we, we got a, we got a motion. And I'm in second. All in favor, would they do that?
Okay. Make a second.
Yeah, I'm in second.
Got a motion from Rand to opt out of medical marijuana in its entirety.
All out.
For Union County. I got a second from Chad. All in favor? Motion carries.